So, football co-op sponsorship. What is a co-op sponsorship? So essentially, what it means is you're partnering with a neighboring school district to create more opportunities for students. If you do not currently have the sport of football. So, the co-op sponsorship I'm proposing will allow our students to participate in that sport for another school district. A school district that has agreed to partner with us, that sport is Conderweiser, very close neighboring school district, probably a school district that some of our students live closer to in Topahakin. They probably will play youth sports on some of the Conderweiser teams, including football. So, we're gonna advocate football. I think it would be a great opportunity for our students. Again, I've been here for seventeen years. I've seen a lot of students come through the hallways at Topahakin that could certainly benefited from football. Students who have played football at the youth level and then they get up to the high school and are no longer given that opportunity. I've had a couple conversations recently with some parents of students who were either not given that opportunity to participate in football or, you know, never got involved in football because knowing they were not going to have the opportunity to play. So, the first parent I talked to, student graduating a few years back, and just got the phone call to her one night at Parkland after a basketball game, and she said to me that her son really lost his passion for sports when we were not able to give him that opportunity when he was in high school. Played other sports for us. And, to be honest with you, I saw that lack of passion from when he was younger, coming up through our junior high, and then when he got into high school. So that was the one. The other one, I was looking at the list, because we had done a survey just to see what students were interested as of right now in the potential to play football. And I noticed a student was on the list and his dad was one of our coaches. So, I got talking to him. I said, "Hey, I noticed your son was on the list. You know, do you think he's serious about playing football?" And he said, "Well, I don't know, but, you know, when he was a kid, he..." I mean, not kid anymore, but when he was younger, he would always talk about wanting to play football at the youth level. And his dad kind of shied him away from that because he knew, once he got to high school, that there was not going to be that opportunity. So, he certainly had kids in the past. He did not get the opportunity. We've had kids in the past who will battle our district to attend other schools so that they can have that opportunity to play football. But I think the biggest benefit is creating more opportunities for our students. So, I'll turn it over to you, because I'm sure you have questions.
Why is there not, how are the students that they're willing to do this?
Nope, they have, they have enough students in the football team. They've been very successful over the years, so it's not about numbers. When I met with their football coach and their athletic director, one thing he said was all about creating more opportunities for kids.
What was the question that was asked of our students, exactly?
The question was, I think there was like, it was a couple different questions. You know, name, grade, how much, have you had any prior experience with football? But essentially, it was if you were given the opportunity to have a co-op in football, and we explained the co-op in the description, meaning you would attend Topahakin but play football for a neighboring school, would you be interested?
So I thought Brett and I met on Friday to talk a little bit about this. And the one thing that I thought was interesting, that I had not realized, is that we are the only district in Berks County that does not partner with another district to provide football. So, you know, we went through Brandiwine, I threw some of the names out and looked at that. That was surprising, I did not realize that we are the only district to partner or that partners. Either partners or hasn't.
If we're the only school district in Berks County that does not give their students the opportunity to play football.
So there's other districts in Berks that partner?
Yes.
Not had that opportunity?
Only, only partners with Cleveland, Antietam partners with Exeter, Brandiwine partners with Princeton. There's other, other three schools that don't have a football program that partners another school to give their kids the opportunity.
So I hear what you're saying, and you would, that never has taught us at Topahakin. Can we do what you want to do?
Sure, absolutely.
One of the biggest hurdles over the years, I've been very passionate about this since I started here, even before I became the athletic director. Because again, I've seen students come through our hallways that I look at them and I think they could really benefit from playing football. You know, they're not built to play soccer. And, and again, we've had students, you know, over the years that have said, "I hope we have football, I would definitely play," or "I played when I was, you know, in the youth program." So I've been very passionate and I've always consistently approached our neighboring school districts about this possibility. And it's never been a possibility, a real possibility until now. Most times, the school districts are not interested because the one thing about all the neighboring school districts to us are they're kind of all the way around the middle of the pack in terms of enrollment for, for the classification. So, accepting fifty percent of our enrollment, or, you know, even back six, seven years ago when they had the count, a hundred percent of our enrollment, it would always bump them up to the next place. As of right now, co-op sponsorship with Conderweiser would not move them up to the next place. They're currently in 4A, it would not move them up to 5A. One of the things that came up in our meeting was, you know, what happens in the future if the enrollment numbers change and how the sponsorship bumps them up. And, you know, the coach would not be interested as of now in terminating the contract if that were to happen. He's, again, he's a respected coach in, in the county. And, you know, he's fearful, he's fearful that it would look bad on, you know, their program, their school district if all of a sudden, just because they want to play, it's now they don't want one of our kids anymore.
How long is a good coach with Conderweiser?
I don't know. Probably just one year.
Okay, so long?
Okay. Matt, he was a coach when he played football, why am I missing correct?
Alan had just, Alan where, he had just committed to Conderweiser. It was also very, Alan's been there at least fifteen years. I don't know if I'd go twenty, because then we're getting close to when I got out of school. But I do, I have a lot of respect for Coach Allen, for what he's done with the program and the kids. My only concern is, and what I voice to everybody here is, it's a four-year commitment. So what happens when Topahakin grows, right? Over the next four, four years, eight years? What I want to see is Topahakin, there's a ground floor of parents that would like to see a youthful one and have that at Topahakin. And I understand Conderweiser has to be football, and that's an opportunity for our kids. But there's parents here that want to see, you know, just like a lot of other schools. And I know it's a challenge right now with numbers, Ollie's going through the same thing, but I think we need to think about foundation for Topahakin football. If we're gonna make this commitment for four years at Conderweiser, I think we need to make it, or at least be open-minded for a youth program here at Topahakin and to see what type of interest there is.
To Matt's point, I think everybody in this room is open to that. Maybe they go, our, our youth community, like our soccer community, or basketball community needs to go out, set the foundations, show us they have a program.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna argue the chicken and the egg theory, because no one in their right mind is gonna start a youth program where there's no possibility of playing in school. Nobody's gonna start and spend thousands of dollars on a youth football program and have kids enroll in it who are in sixth and seventh grade to go, what, learn and play a year, and there's nowhere for them to go. So, it's not one or the other, and then, oh, we'll see. It's the whole district together, the school and the youth player. I mean, I run youth sports programs and I'm heavily involved in them, and it is beyond frustrating when you're trying to do things for kids and the school has no care, I'll say it that way, of what's happening in the youth programs. These kids are the feeder program for a school district, one way or another, whether it's soccer. Topahakin, as soon as you come out of the womb, you've got soccer ball in front of you. Okay? I graduated from here, would have loved to play football. The excuses I always heard through high school, it's too much money, the insurance costs too much, kids don't want to do it. Then we throw some questions out, and we got forty-nine kids who are interested in playing football. That's outstanding. A neighboring district has had football forever, basically, and they barely had forty-nine kids. And they have a successful program. So, to put it all back on somebody starting a youth program, having to find a farmer's field somewhere to stick some goalposts in, like, I'm, I'm, when I brought this up before being a board member, Oscar threw the same thing at me. You know, "I'll start a youth program, and then we'll talk about it in a couple of years." I respectfully disagreed. Like, it's gotta be a youth commitment. I know I've heard from people in the district who have echoed the same thing. We would start a youth program if there was commitment from the school to have it. I'm open to the co-op thing, but much like Matt said, I would only be open to it if there's commitment from the school to bring it within our district. And again, my opinion, we're talking spending seventy billion dollars on a high school remodel and renovation and new turf fields, and somebody wants to squawk about three thousand dollars for some goalposts, like, in the grand scheme of things?
I don't think it's the cost, Rusty. It's the effort. I don't think anybody sitting here in this board, a youth program, I mean, if that's what you're looking for, for a youth program, you want a commitment from this board, you have forty kids willing to move up to junior high, high football from a youth program, just like our wrestling program had done, how many years ago was that? And guess what? As wrestling was on the cutting block, the youth program got together, guess what we have today? Still a wrestling program.
Yeah, we had a whole team.
A full team?
Yeah, a full team, sure. And, you know, Matt, listen, I'm not saying that football and Topahakin is never a possibility. It certainly could be a possibility. You don't know what's going to happen in the future with numbers, youth opportunities. But, you know, my goal right now, what my goal has been since I started here, you know, when I was just a teacher, is to get these kids the opportunity now. Because starting a youth football program or, you know, title status or a football program is not helping the forty-nine kids that were not allowing this opportunity right now. Because a football program not starting here, you know, at least not for the next four years. Because you, you need, you need that organization in place to have a successful program. Even if you have that organization in place, there's no guarantee you're gonna be able to maintain a successful program. We struggle in a lot of sports that are constantly struggling to, you know, get the right people to help out at the youth level. And another thing, you know, is obviously the uniqueness of our school district and how spread out it is makes it even more difficult to establish a youth program. Because if you live in Myers Town, what would you rather do as a parent? Drive five minutes down the road for your kid to play baseball? Or drive thirty minutes down to Timberville for your kid to play baseball?
So I heard a couple...
Where do they play youth soccer?
They, they probably drive to Timberville. Because that program has been just historically established over the years, and because of the successful program, you know, they wanted the kids to get exposure to Topahakin soccer, give them the best opportunity to succeed when they get to the high school. They don't want them to play Conderweiser soccer, they want them to play Topahakin soccer.
So about ten, I don't know how many years ago, I was told that we were gonna enter agreement. I'm not sure if it was with Conderweiser or who, but then we pulled out when we were presented with all of the costs. And historically, this board has been known to be, will keep things tight in all situations. And I have numbers in front of me that make me want to faint from other school districts. Startup cost, cost per one player, costs that we haven't even, and I'm sure those who play do know, apparently it's required by law to have an ambulance there, and they come half an hour before, and it's four hundred and seventy-five dollars to have an ambulance sit there. Costs like that that I, I didn't even think about. There's tons of costs. And then I see five hundred dollars per player for football. Okay, I'm not sure, you probably know what it costs per soccer player to buy them two jerseys and two shoes. Parents pay for the shin guards, the parents pay for the shoes, parents pay for anything else that the child is actually... Football, they have game bags, because I guess all the equipment is so large that they need to have in, which are very expensive per player that the school buys. So, if we're gonna invest this much financially into one sport, then I think we should pay for all the soccer player stuff in the past, which is nothing comparatively speaking. And I am extremely uncomfortable with paying this much money, but all around us, you can send your kid somewhere to play soccer, you can choose not to live here. You know, I had a girlfriend who found a beautiful piece of property, adopted a girl, they started in Topahakin, they liked their school, but they chose to send her to another school because they gave more opportunities than what they were interested in. That's completely their right and pride. So I think, you know, and why, where are we gonna stop? Lacrosse, let's offer lacrosse. That comes up every now and then to this board. You know, wrestling has struggled historically, now I hear it's strong, but I think things are strong, although our class enrollment. You know, my kids were in the school and some classes were really strong, and my son was just telling me there were four players in his class for soccer. That's just the way it is, you know? So, it's going to wax and rain anyway, just by attendance. And so to put this much, I mean, well, close maybe are only three thousand dollars for that, there's that running thing, but you have to, you know, that's thirty-five hundred dollars. Some of these coaches, there's many more coaches required. You must film every practice, everything, because apparently, the one coach I talked to, his entire job is to protect the head coach after games. His parents rush the coach and say, "Why wasn't my kid, why did you pull him out? Why did..." So they sit down with these parents with films. I mean, don't get me wrong, I was screaming, yelling, soccer, you know, parent fan, but we got in the car, we groaned and groaned, we thought it through, and we came out on the other side. It seems with football, there's a huge passion, which is great, that's great, and there's a huge drive behind some parents who all think their kid's gonna get that scholarship. You know, how many times have we seen that in Topahakin? You know, I remember seeing a baseball player down the road, I remember two soccer players that I know all by hand. But it's not, I don't know why there's this big thing, but my concern is all of the money that we are spending when our English program, four years, we are, we are behind you. We, honestly, if we should be putting money, I think it's to that. I was not at the bottom of it, but I think that was brought up again, in relation, you know, you don't have anything to do with that. But, I mean, this coach I talked to said eighty-three thousand dollars to start up, he thinks is more reasonable now.
Well, it's definitely a lot. I think we're kind of got a little off topic here, because as I said at the beginning, I'm here to advocate for a co-op sponsorship. The, the money involved in that, would be, the money you see there, five hundred per player for high school, three fifty per player for junior high, that's what it costs to safely equip.
So that's for a shirt?
No, that's for a helmet, that's for shoulder pads, that's what they...
So why aren't the parents being, you know, just like soccer?
We're not even to that, that point. Don't get kind of interject, we're getting really off of weeds here.
Well, I don't think so, because of what Harry was saying.
I, I, I follow that.
You know, we do need to look to the future, aren't we, just saying to this?
We do, but I think we gotta go back to what, what are, what's on the agenda here tonight. And, you know, that's a discussion for down the road. It's, it is, and, you know, I mean, we need to, if we're comfortable with, with allowing Brett to continue these discussions with the board, and then, there's a lot of steps that we gotta jump through, you know? I mean, Conderweiser Board has to okay this.
So, Conderweiser Athletic Director, certainly that it's a done deal, they're gonna prove it more than that. So, there's, I mean, yes, Brett, they're not ensuring as, as much of an extra cost as we are as a district, but they're taking some risk. But again, you have a team that's well-established, they're not, Cootstown's struggling with numbers, that they need our numbers to maintain your football program. They're taking a lot of risk, but they want to take that risk because the coach wants to give the kids more opportunities.
And I think we recognize, recognize that point. And again, I think we gotta get back to what we're discussing here. Are we comfortable with moving forward with even a co-op to start that opportunity? Or not? That's our, our decision here right now, after this presentation, to allow Brett to move forward. And then another discussion for another day.
Do you have any projected costs, even though you're so early in the stages of this? Is there any place to project?
The costs are on the back. So, again, the, the number you see there is very standard to all the other schools that go out and play football in the county. Again, we're just talking about the amount that costs to equip a player safely, how much is sold with that. You're right, it's not soccer. We, we tell the parents to buy shin guards, doesn't mean we're talking, you know, what, ten, twenty?
Time out, time out a second. Let's just, let's go back to where we were first at. So we're talking about four-year co-op, which is outstanding. That Conderweiser wants to bring forty-nine of our kids, right? There's a, there's a song by Kenny G. Chesnut, The Boys of Fall, "Have dreams, dream big." We've got seventh through eleventh graders, forty-nine of them, that have dreams, that want to play football. We want to give them an opportunity. All these costs, you know, Pat is this and that paying for this. There's youth programs that have boosters and everything else that raise a lot of money. Football does raise more money than soccer, I will just tell you that. I've seen it, I've built it out, it does. And honestly, the football team might pull from the soccer. There might be athletes that say, "You know what, I don't want to play soccer anymore, I'd rather play football." That's a choice that we're gonna give the kids. And right now, we're talking about four years of a co-op with Topahakin and Conderweiser. So, I sit here tonight, I'm a hundred percent on board with giving our children the opportunity to make decisions and have a dream if you want to play football for the next four years, seventh through eleventh grade. The whole elementary, middle school stuff, that's a later conversation, that there will be parents that help build that program, if, if there is.
So hypothetically, I'm just devil's advocate here. So we got forty-nine people.
Who expressed interest.
Expressed interest, okay. I've been through these types of things personally with our schools. We have forty-nine that express interest. When it comes down to sign up, we go to fifty percent. Am I not right?
Yes, that's what I...
And then, when it comes down to time of showing up, the first day of practice, we're down to fifty percent again. Would you not concur?
I mean, that might be a little extreme, like, in my experience, let's say you had thirty sign up for soccer, you might get twenty-five, you know? But this is a different story. I mean, some of these kids that signed up for football have no idea what a football practice looks like. I mean, it's not the same as playing, you know, in the Turkey Bowl or playing football out there in the USA. It's not the same. So, I would be naive to think all forty-nine of those kids are going to go to the first practice at Conderweiser. But I do know that some kids...
How bad are our feelings going to be hurt when we said, and to your point, it's only seventy-five percent? So we sent thirty-three kids over for practice.
How bad are their feelings in here? Not at all, they don't, they don't...
No, no, I understand. But our kids, who didn't play before, who, you know, don't even know how to lead a, a pass, and how many kids does Conderweiser have, like, they have a full, full team? I was at one of their grades, and players on the bench. Are we ready, and this is, I'm asking a question, and this isn't from me, I'm just saying, are we ready for that complaint coming back? "Oh, we have this co-op, but no kid's got to play." Well, maybe our children weren't as talented because of whatever, you know? Because of the lack of that youth program, to you guys' point. And I don't know how you start that. But again, I go back to this agenda here tonight, and we're gonna go back to, are we comfortable with Brett moving forward, or are we not? And I'm gonna ask at this point, if we have a motion for Brett to move forward, we're gonna vote on this, and that's where we're gonna go.
So that's forty-nine kids, twenty-one indicate that they have experience. I, I think, right now, we do have, again, it fluctuates by plans. You know, some years you might have four seniors on the soccer team, some years you might have ten. Right now, I think we have a decent amount of kids that were playing for school about, that were playing for Conderweiser, that were playing for Elko. We have a decent amount of kids that are playing football, or just finished playing football, because they don't operate once basically at age three.
There is a large amount of children. I mean, personally, who go to Myers Town, play for the Myers Town Panthers program. There's also a large amount that go to London Leighton, play for their Midget program. And I've said before, born, raised my entire life, my dad, my grandfather. I transferred my son out of this school district to give him the opportunity to play football because that's what he wanted. So, to say that kids don't up and leave or find ways to go to other schools to pursue what they want to do, you're being naive or something.
Chris made that comment. Do you rather have people move out of the school district, just you saying, "No, you..."
And again, let's get back to where we're at here.
Okay.
Let's make, let's make a motion.
I'm all for giving kids opportunities, but there is a point where you have to stop. I, I think we should offer French and Russian and all kinds of, but, but we're not there. Okay, back to the football. Should we offer it, should we not? That is the bottom line, what you're saying. And in my book, I'd rather have a school that we're excellent in a few sports, than we offer a whole gamut and we're mediocre, because I guarantee you, this will pull from soccer. Because even just kids maybe who aren't built for football, but they're interested, so next year they're gonna bail out and they're gonna try it, and they say, "Crap, you know, next year I'm gonna back to soccer." But it will definitely affect a program that we have a reputation to not scare to go against all the offerings are. And I, I love to keep that reputation. Yes, we don't have football, but we have it all around us, and we do have opportunities. So for us to pay for all this stuff, to have opportunities, I would rather invest it in English and languages.
Of the, of the forty-nine kids, they end up being fifty-six. Of that fifty-six kids, there's only two... Of that fifty-six kids, there's only two that currently play soccer. And I had a discussion with the soccer coach about what he thought about that. And he was on board with, hey, this is the best opportunity for them, then I'm for it, you know? And one of the kids got varsity minutes this year. But when you look at him and you look at him, he, he's more suited for football. I mean, you know, baseball, like, don't be, stop, you know? And you had mentioned something about scholarships earlier. There are a lot of scholarships out there for soccer. There aren't a lot of scholarships out there for baseball. But there are a lot of scholarships out there for football. And it doesn't have to be Division One. There are scholarships out there at other levels. And it, I constantly see, um, you know, Burke schools, when they do their signing days, like we do our signing day. They have, you know, multiple football players that are getting money to go to school at a D-three or a D-two level because they play football. Because schools can give out a lot more scholarships in that sport than... Some of our kids might someday have that opportunity to get scholarships. Some of them would like to learn, to learn lessons and dealing with adversity because football is a diminutive sport.
Chris, I'll, to your point, I agree a hundred percent. Our focus should be academics. And tonight, we'll hear a little bit of that. And I think our academics on the latest test scores are headed in the right direction. And I think we're making movement. And I agree hardly, and I think we've made some staffing decisions to build that. But the other piece I will, you know, as a, as a former high school principal, one of the connections, when a kid can make a connection to sports, it naturally lends itself to a better academic environment. I mean, and, and that's where I think, you know, as weird as this sounds, my dad, who has no connection to Topahakken, was at a funeral. And somebody at Topahakken was there and went up to my dad and recognized the name and said, hey, tell your son to start a football program at Topahakken. You know, when I talked to him the other night, I said, it's ironic, we're talking about it Tuesday night at a board meeting. I do, I, I fully support this. I think it's a good opportunity. I know we're, we're stepping into uncharted territory and we don't know where this will go. You know, if we may, we might find out two years from now and say, this was a bad idea. We may find out four years from now and say, you know what? Let's go another four years because by the time our kids are ready to go through the youth program, we're going to have a turf field for football. I mean, we have beautiful fields everywhere. We have two huge fields at two elementaries that we could easily put up whole posts and get that program going and, and start building that, that youth program. And when you look at the cost of this program, you know, for basketball alone, we spent fifty-six hundred dollars this past season on transportation. Now add all the coaches and the equipment and all that. And we're there at that twelve thousand dollar figure for high school. So I don't, I, I think proportionately, you know, cost, I think, I think cost has a way and a factor. But I think at this point, I think it's a, it's a good opportunity for our kids. It's something we should pursue. And there's going to be clauses in these, in this agreement that either side can back out if they need to, if we get down that road. But I, I, I agree with Kyle, it's, there's, you know, Brent does need some direction. And we will bring a full agreement in June for our board to approve if that's the direction we go. But I think it's a great opportunity for our kids. It's something since I've heard, since I've been here, that I've heard about football. Same thing as Brent's mentioned, kids, and I've seen kids come through. That would be ideal football players. And, and it's a, it's a missed opportunity. And I think this is a, a step in that direction to kind of see where things lie.
And I know you may need time to think, to think about it, talk, uh, you know, that's understandable. That we're like up against it because in order to give our kids the best chance of success in the fall, they need to begin to work right now with what Conner Weiser's doing for, you know, for their summer workouts and planning to be successful in, in football. It's my understanding, I've talked to people at PIWA, as long as there's like a good base less or moving forward, there's nothing that's going to prohibit those kids from working out for Conner Weiser in the summer.
So they're going to be required to work out for the summer?
They will not be required, just like any other sport here. It's not required that you do anything in the summer. It's.
I think everyone sitting here knows that if you don't work out in the summer, it's not required.
Well, I run into too many football players, coaches who say, yeah, ha ha, we don't require.
That goes for soccer, that goes for lacrosse, that goes across my board.
Well, my kids did not pay me and all the premier teams. They did their own thing in the summer, they came back in the, and they were not prejudiced against. I can tell you that. The coach treated them fairly like anybody else who paid all the money and all the summer.
I'm saying, in open gyms and stuff like that, a workout.
Right.
They probably participate in their own. Correct.
No, no, they did their own thing. They did, they.
And that's, that's one thing with both the football. There's not, that's the other reason why our kids have not had this opportunity. Because let's say we didn't have soccer. There's travel soccer teams all over. It doesn't matter where, where you live. Your kids can play soccer all year round. Kids can't play football all year round. There's not such a thing. They don't, you know, they don't have these travel teams for football because of the nature of the sport and how, how heavily.
So are we comfortable letting Brent move forward? Where are we at? Somebody going to make a motion?
I'm making a motion, we have Brent move forward and roll on.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Chris Miller, no.
No.
Bats?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Palmer?
No.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Lionel?
Yes.
This is just to allow that negotiation to continue. Correct, they're going to be bringing a final agreement with cost figures back to us. Probably should send that before we move forward. Correct?
Yeah, because there's got to be more required. We, we don't get the rest for free. We don't get the ambulance for free.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so this is just for you to, our, our.
Right.
What?
Conner Weiser.
What I interpreted of that motion, just to be clear, and so that we're all clear here, is for you to continue with these negotiations, to come back to us with, this is our expectations as Topahakken, and this is Conner Weiser's expectations, and this is the plan of us urging together to do this program. Is that what we, is that correct?
Yes, the typical groups, and we worked on these before, except for, because it's sometimes in other districts. But they'll present an agreement back with the price per student. The ambulance, the coaches, all that is built into the price per student to go on.
And they've set that number, correct? That is the number?
Five hundred and three fifty, yes.
They've already given us that. So this is.
As far as I'm concerned, now, something might change after tomorrow night when they talk about it at their board. But as far as I'm concerned, the numbers you have in front of you is what it's going to cost us. Now, I can't tell you exactly, that is basically the most it's going to cost if you had ten kids in the club. I mean, the, the seventy-two days I put in there for transportation, that's if the team makes the state championship. Like, that's the last possible day they're going to be. Most likely not going to be that, especially for June high because they're going to be done much earlier. And you don't know what kind of transportation we're going to use. Depends on how many kids there are. Are we able to take vans, which would basically, you know, cut all that transportation cost? Are, are we talking, you know, one-way transportation where we take the kids down there, you know, after school for practices and games? And then, and then we require the parents to pick them up there after practices and games are over and bring them back? We do it for some days and not other days. I mean, that's, that's all decisions that we're going to have to make. But the numbers that you see there, unless Conner Weiser wrote something different, add us, that, that, those are the numbers.
I guess I would appreciate you verifying that. We're not having some other costs anticipated. And the other thing parents should know is, Burke County, from what I understand, Football League is gone. So Conner Weiser's moving to the Lancaster Lebanon leagues. That means games are going to be much further away.
Right, but we're not going to be, we're not going to be busing our kids to Lanting or Strausburg.
Right, they're going to go to.
They're going to go to Conner Weiser and then they're going to be busing the kids out there. Yes, Burke, the Burke's league starting next year. We're combining with the LL to give teams a better opportunity at success. You know, with the, the way the divisions were going in Burke County and the disparity amongst teams. You know, you had teams like Cootstown who were getting blown out every game. Hard to field a team, you know, they had kids getting injured. So they're putting, you know, with, with the board teams, they can, they can, uh, put like-sized teams in divisions, um, uh, in hopes that, you know, it will be to more success for some of those teams who struggle.
And how's the insurance level? Brian, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah.
Why is it?
But then that would increase the chances they can, they're not going to carry us. So whatever goes up to carry is well on our students, whatever, we need to recharge them.
It's certainly not even as price, price, yeah.
That's still in the five hundred. Because they don't know if we're going to give them five student charges.
Yeah.
Right, it, it probably does this fluctuate. They probably pay a flat insurance fee, I would imagine. Because you have no year in, year out.
Well, during the year, my, uh, it doesn't break our policy. But we're, we're.
But their policy does, like, our policy does not, whether we have thirty kids at soccer or we have a hundred kids at soccer. Is it per child or?
They asked how many students are involved in the application.
Brent, can you find out some?
Only and continue what, how, what their transportation is like? Like, like you said, do parents drive them home after the game or? Do they have any, there's a.
Typically, typically, it doesn't mean you can't, typically, bus, bus ride. From the school to the game, students must get back on the bus, go back to the school.
Correct.
They don't allow, typically don't allow parents to take.
The biggest question was, so they get brought, brought to Weiser?
Yeah.
So does Topahakken have to have a bus there and coordinate with Conner Weiser and say, up nine forty-five, the bus is going to be back, they got to be there and now bussing back to Topahakken?
That's going to be, that's going to be.
Typically, the way, way we do it, if a student takes Topahakken, approve transportation to an away event, you know, we're not bussing. And don't let them school practice.
I'm saying, practice for an away game. So again, they go down to Lanting or Strausburg on Friday night and they get back to school at ten-thirty at Weiser. Or is Topahakken going to be responsible for providing the driving of the vehicle to be at Conner Weiser at ten-thirty at night and bussing back to Topahakken?
We'll allow parents to pick up their, their students.
This is all stuff of asking you to find out and put it back to us.
I think that would be our decision.
Yeah.
It would be our decision if we.
So bring back that recommendation of what you're going to do. All right, let's move on. Notice, you have a friend.
Do you need me to resume? Would you pay like?
Thanks for your work.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
We'll have a secretary soon. We'll have a little communication. I don't want to. I don't want to report action.
Nine point oh one, I made a motion to approve the creation of the Memorial Scholarship as presented at the May third, twenty twenty-two board meeting.
Wait a second. Any comments? Roll call.
Bats?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Lionel?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Nine point oh two, I'm going to approve the twenty twenty-two Pennsylvania FFA Summer Convention Field Trip to Penn State from six seven twenty twenty-two through six nine twenty twenty-two as presented at the five three board meeting.
Wait a second. Comments? Roll call?
Bats?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Lionel?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Moving on to files, Mr. Lionel.
Nine point one, files. Nine one one, one one, adopt the preliminary budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year with projected expenditures of like, and projected revenues of like, including the real estate tax military of year tax, Act five eleven per capita.
Hold on, hold on.
They put on, they had put on a list. He was on the old law, got an email. Adopt the preliminary budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year with projected expenditures of thirty-eight million, seven hundred forty-five thousand, two oh four and projected revenue of thirty-eight million, four ninety-five, two oh four, including a real estate tax military of point five, point seven five. Act five eleven per capita tax of five point zero zero. School code section six seventy-nine per capita tax of five dollars. Point five percent earned income tax and a point five percent real estate transfer tax.
So I can just elaborate on that. What we have in front of you is the actual PDD required form. And we have people have it on display for thirty days. So it will be on display starting tomorrow at the district office. Uh, and on June twenty-first, we'll act on the final, the final budget. What we have in front of you is the, the budget with a quarter mill decrease, quarter, uh, one quarter mill decrease. So twenty-six point zero zero to twenty-five point seven five. That's what the plan has to be recommended. I'm still asking to leave, leave yourselves open to, to a lower decrease, like a point one. Because all the numbers aren't in yet. We don't know what the basic numbers are going to be for revenue. But that's what this is built on. There are some significant increases, I just want to, well, the, the biggest increases are heating oil. That's over two hundred thousand, transportation is over eight hundred thousand. There's a bond issue in here that we're, for the building projects is, is in here. And that's basically covered by the price of, and.
Have you had any prices, or school supplies priced for next year?
Any what?
Supplies.
Supplies?
Yes.
We've got bits in for paper and things like that, and they're significantly higher. So they're all, everything, I mean, everything's higher.
Another BCTC, they were saying it's a lot higher for.
Yes. Paper, paper is the biggest one we've been getting yet. So again, this is, this is the mileage reduction. I have, if you go to the back, I have some suffering pages. But basically, your real estate mileage, uh, the average mileage, tax bill would be reduced by forty-one dollars because of the mileage decrease. The Homestead-Farmstead exclusion, last year it was two hundred and eight, two hundred and nine dollars. The state's giving us more money for that, it's going to go to two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So everybody's getting additional fifty-seven dollars. The Homestead-Farmstead property, if you're approved for Homestead-Farmstead, you'll see an increase in your, well, a decrease in your bill of another fifty-seven dollars. And that Homestead Act, that will be dealt with that. So, uh, we'll see. And again, we're the only district going down again. And that, that I know, so far, there's six districts going up, two staying the same, and, and we're going down. So far, that's all we have, that's in so far. So again, that's, so this will, again, it's be on display for thirty days. And things can change in the budget, and we will change between now and then once we get numbers. We don't have insurance numbers yet, we don't have subsidy numbers yet. Oh, there's a lot that we're still gathering.
Does he get the numbers, can you forward them so we can? Can we have a second? Yes. Awesome. Other comments? Roll call?
Kaufman?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Lionel?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Nine point one, point two, approve the fol, make a motion to approve the following institutions as the depositories for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year as, as listed.
Fox, a second. Any comments? Roll call.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Lionel?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Nine point one, point three. Point Matthew Lidle and poor treasurer for a term beginning July first, twenty twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three for a stipend of five hundred dollars.
Second. Any comments? Chair, do you got anything? Chair?
Yeah, we're ready.
Yeah, one caller. Extracurricular activity, huh? Any comments? Roll call.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Lionel?
Same.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna move on to buildings and grounds. We are going to table nine point two, point one, and I'll just go on to nine point two, point two. Prove of proposal by Dave Look Witty for the PB main court basketballs at a cost of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, I think the location of. Second. Any comments? Roll call.
Patrick?
Yes.
Lionel?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes. Mr. Palmer will take on the policy. Nine point four, point one, I moved that we give second reading and final approval to the following policies. Policy number zero zero zero, policy board policy procedure. Policy number zero zero one, manual classification. Policy number zero zero two, authority and powers. Zero zero three, function. Zero zero four, membership. Zero zero five, organization. Zero zero six, meetings. Zero zero six, point one, attendance at meetings via electronic devices. Zero point, zero zero seven, policy manual access. And zero one one, principles for governor, governor and some leadership. Second, then. Any comments? Roll call.
Lionel?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes. Nine point five, curriculum. We're gonna have a presentation on Mr. Hammer.
So I'll just preface this presentation. You remember several years ago, it's two years ago now, we were put on a designation, ATSI, based on some subgroup data. We were required to submit a plan to the state and we're now in year two of that plan that we now need to submit a new plan. Mr. Hammer and Mr. Lynch will be presenting some information on that plan. And you should, I believe you have a copy in front of you is.
Roll call.
Yes. Roll call, you will find bolded items of our overall priorities and measures of effectiveness of how we're gonna approach the priorities. The section page will begin our slide presentation. After the slide presentation, you will see the overall total detail of the ATSI plan. But what I'm gonna do at this point is our newly released PBOs data and our attendance data is out. I'm gonna allow Mr. Lynch to present that information and then I'll go into the meat of the ATSI plan.
First, I'd just like to reintroduce myself. I'm Doug Lynch, I am the new junior high principal. And as someone that's getting activated to the role, one thing I wanted to make a priority was to work very closely with Mr. Hammer to activate myself to where we are, where we're headed and, and the plan that he's worked so hard to book for in motion. If you take a look at the board right here, you are looking at the twenty twenty-one PSSA data for grades seven and keystones. Each of these numbers right here indicate a subgroup of individuals, one being the low achieving students, five being the highest achieving students designated by the states, by the state and the previous scores. What those pie charts tell you, for example, in twenty twenty-one for grade seven, our subgroup number one, that blue indicates a large amount of growth. The green for four and five, the, the upper tiers of the student population for achievement, those green mean that we met the state's growth expectations. If you look at eighth grade, you'll see subgroup one, those low achieving students, they met the growth that the state would like to see. Now, we are very much aware that that yellow you see is telling us that yes, growth occurred, just not to the extent the state expected and hence the plan that Mr. Hammer will go over with you shortly. If you take a look at the far right, by right, the keystones, you can see that are low achieving students group one, they met the growth and all other subgroups exceeded the growth expectations of the state for math in twenty twenty-one.
No, no, if I could just point out right?
Yes.
It's that, the last two, the seventh grade or the eighth grade PSSAs in the Keystone, that's not uncommon across the state and, and here's why. When you have an eighth grader, you have eighth graders that are either entering Math eight track or they're entering Keystone algebra. And the problem is, both are measuring two very different types of skill set for math. But an eighth grader is required, if you're taking out Keystone algebra at eighth grade, you are also required to take the Math PSSA at eighth grade. So historically, and across the state, specifically in Copahawk, we have kids that score advanced and proficient on the Keystone exam for math, but then score basic on the PSSAs for math. It's, it, it sounds crazy, but if you look, you know, we score very well when it comes to Keystone, the algebra. We've got significant growth and what's really exciting across the board is you're looking at some of our lowest, they're called quintiles, our lowest quintiles are making growth. Before, that used to be, especially at the seventh grade level, we would see a lot of red, red you don't see. But we're at least showing growth and this is, what's exciting to us on this data is, this is coming right off a pandemic. These are the scores as how kids performed last year. Not a lot of emphasis was placed on standardized tests at that point and we're showing some positive data. And this data actually is replicated across the board in all of our buildings.
Next, we'll just briefly look at English line charts. As you can see, there's quite a bit of green there, meaning many of the, those quintiles that Dr. Nestnik just alluded to. We're, we're meeting the growth standard for the state of Pennsylvania in almost every single one of those quintiles. And again, that, the yellow that you do see there, whether it's group four and group two in, in seventh and eighth grade respectively, and then the yellow in that literature Keystone right there. A lot of that brewing for growth where, yes, we're seeing some growth, but we're, we're looking to push and, and, you know, exceed what the state is expecting. That's a lot of what Mr. Hammer is gonna emphasize in this plan or in how the plan is using. And then last but not least, science, PSSAs are taken in fourth grade and eighth grade, so that's why you're only seeing a pie graph, a pie chart right there in the middle column for eighth grade. And we, in all five quintiles, have met the growth expectation of the state. The far right would be the data given to us regarding the biology Keystone, where, you know, subgroup or quintile one, those lower achieving students met the growth metric. Number five exceeded it and number three, again, growth was occurring, just not quite to the state's expectations, where, that's kind of where we never heard. Two and four, they are white because there was not enough data to show significant information. Last, I just want to emphasize or kind of show you the, the growth we've made with regards to attendance. I know it's very hard to see, so I tried to blow it up here for you. The overall student attendance back in the eighteen nineteen school year was eighty-one point four percent. That was overall for every student in the junior high and the high school. Looking closer at two subgroups, the economically disadvantaged attendance, sixty-eight and four tenths percent subgroup for our special ed attendance, seventy-one point four. So back in eighteen nineteen, there was a lot of room for growth, Mr. Hammer, if you want to. Fast forward to this year, this data is current, for our student population, all students, grades seven to twelve, it is up to ninety-two point two seven percent. So quite a large jump from eighteen nineteen, within our two subgroups there, special education, students in special education, up to ninety-one point seven seven percent. And then those students that economically disadvantaged, that fall under that free and reduced subgroup, they're up to ninety-two point two percent. So quite a large jump there in a short amount of time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lynch. So we, the past couple of years, we've had a lot of good things come out, we've had a lot of programs, we've had a lot of initiatives. For this new rollout of our ATSI, feel we need to condense, put things together, consolidate and make a clear, concise plan for all of our students. This is gonna be a two-pillar approach. On the left side, we have our school-wide positive behavior interventions and supports. That's gonna be our attendance piece, that's gonna be our discipline piece. The multi-tiered systems of support, that's gonna be strictly our academics. The multi-tiered systems of support are to allow students to come into our building, early in education, we come into our building and they already are built in with those supports. They don't take time, they don't go through seventh grade, they don't go through eighth grade, follow through the tracks. They are identified early and they are provided with the supports. Those supports and those systems of supports are not meant to be attacked, to be labeled. It's a temporary support that the kid, the child gets exactly what they need when they need it and they are brought back down to their current regular educational classes. We want our kids to be within, with their peers in regular ed classes. But we need supports in order to identify and break down individual needs based on their perceived child. PBIS, positive behavior interventions and supports. Each one of these programs, these two pillars are designed with three tiers. Three being the most comprehensive, one being the least. One is broad strokes across the population of all our students. Every child will get to tier one. Tier one, we have our Tulpe Pride Challenge, that is a friendly little competition between the grades. We monitor, weekly monitor attendance, discipline and academics. Display that information to children, we talk about it, we hype them up, we have incentives at the end of the quarter. Little friendly competition to bring up their attendance, to reduce the amount of Fs and to reduce the amount of discipline referrals. In the beginning of the year, when we roll out our Tulpe Pride program, our Tulpe Pride program is our overall, we call our PBIS. Tulpe Pride is expected behaviors. What does that look like in the classroom? What does it look like in the hallway to act? What does it look like to act when you go to the bathroom or you go to the office? We have an implementation guide for the teachers to roll out to all the students of expected behaviors. They talk it up throughout the year, we make adjustments to those expected behaviors based on our student population. That starts going into our discipline and attendance and academic monitoring, that's our pride challenge again. When we go into tier two is when we start to notice that there have been issues. There's something that's not quite working and with all transparency and honesty this year, vaping became an issue for us. We identified it within our PBS team, we looked at our referrals, those referrals were brought to the staff, to the PBIS team, and we made adjustments. One of those adjustments is that we part, we partnered with Karen. The Karen Foundation came in and we asked them to provide tobacco cessation classes for our kids that get caught vaping. Our referrals went from, I wanna say, very high amount of referrals, I can't put a specific number on it, to almost zero after the tobacco cessation program happened. It's a six to eight week course, like Karen comes in, the child's pulled from lunch and they sit and eat lunch with a Karen, Karen professional and they go through the tobacco cessation program. So once that was implemented, we identified that issue and it was taken care of. Tier three is a one-to-one mentor program. So if we have a younger child, let's say, one of Mr. Lynch's students, seventh or eighth grade, that had a significant discipline referral, yes, there are actions we do have to take as a school, we do have to possibly suspect, we do have to possibly do informal hearings. But that's not enough. We still think that child needs a mentor. So we've started this year, a one-to-one mentor program with an upperclassman. That upperclassman is vetted, goes through and provides one-to-one meetings, they do luncheons, they do breakfasts. They walk the hallways with the students sometimes if needed. That has had significant impact. That is going to be, actually, we've made it part of our disciplinary procedures to have a mentor program. So if a child has a major offense, we do go through our disciplinary action, but then we bring them into the mentor program. How is all these things that we're doing, how do we know that it's working? Number one, we set a goal, we are gonna reduce discipline referrals by ten percent from the end of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two year and the end of twenty twenty-three year. So you're gonna monitor that regularly, every single quarter. We're gonna present that information, make adjustments according to our PBIS as needed. We are gonna continue our work with attendance. One thing with attendance is if we stop focusing on it, that number starts to drop. We want to continue to push, continue to put the things in action that we've already put in place. We build those relationships with kids, we find the barriers that are stopping them, preventing them to come to school. And a lot of the times, kids don't want to come to school because they're not having success. If they're not having success, they don't want to get out of bed, they don't want to come to school. If they have success in school academically and have supports that they need, they come to school. So it's all woven, tied together. We'll be doing bimonthly monitoring of academics, discipline and attendance. That, that is spread out to our teens, identify areas of need, areas of concerns and we make adjustments. Any questions about PBIS before I move on to the NTSS side? Okay, thank you. And to our NTSS, we've identified that we want to focus on math and ELA. You saw what our keystones were with our BLA and you saw what some of the areas were with our math. We want to get our goal, and I know I can speak for Mr. Lynch and all the administrators, probably frankly for everyone, Copahawk should be blue across the board. We have all the right people, we have, our students are great, we can do this, but it's going to take fidelity in making sure that we're implementing these things correctly. Tier one, again, across the board, broad stroke with all our students. Teachers must be adapting and changing classroom instruction according to needs. Format of assessments must be used properly and we must collect that data to use that data in an appropriate way to make database decisions. Algebra extensions is an extension of our algebra program to get kids extra time in the math class. Tier two, so let's say tier one's not working for that particular student, we move them to tier two. Tier two, we have advisory period of interventions. Every day, for the first forty minutes of our day, a child, every child has an opportunity to get extra support in math and English and science. That is not, again, not a stamp, that is a fluid action. Teacher determines, I think this student needs some additional help, they bring them in, they get the additional help. Once they meet the target based on data, they can go back into what they need to guess, go ahead.
Is this built into the teacher's schedule or do we have staff that can make all this?
It's built into their schedule. We also have the foundations of algebra. That is another core class that students can go into. It is taught by an excellent teacher, so we look at students that aren't quite making it in our core algebra classes and they have the opportunity to take the foundations of algebra. They gave them all the basic foundations of exactly what they need to be successful. Tier three, small group or individual instruction. We've identified it, we want to get that core, we want to get that foundation, it's gonna start in seventh grade. I know Mr. Lynch and I have had meetings and the quick time that he's been here, we want to get down, we want to get into the elementary schools. We want to identify early which of our students are struggling with math. Which of our students do not have the foundations they need to be successful in junior high and their fourth high school. Identify that if they are not successful in junior high, very unlikely they're gonna be successful in high school math. So start early, start in second grade, we're gonna have what we're calling our tier math class. That's gonna be a small, small group of students that will begin those basic foundations of math before they move on. ELA, again, classroom instruction, you can see a lot of the programs that we have in place for our overall broad stroke with our students. with our students. Study sync, novel studies, evidence-based academics. My personal student performance goals this year were to work with our high school teachers to make sure that we are teaching to the standards. We partner with the IU to make sure that they come in and we are addressing what they're doing in the classroom, what they're doing in the study sync is actually what we're supposed to be covering with the standards. We have shown early data points and we're making significant progress with our CDT's. Tier two, we are doing advisory period interventions, just like our math program. We have common core clinics, that's kind of what I just touched on with making sure we're getting back to our standards. We have level literacy interventions, SAS materials, pre-teach and reteach model. Pre-teach and reteach is a simple process that we can do in a lot of our classrooms, but it is very effective. Tier three is where we get to our small group or individual instruction. That's our connections OG, three D, and third West. How do we know that all these things that we are calling MTSS and PBIS, how do we know it's working for MTSS? We have to make sure we're monitoring with fidelity and making adjustments as necessary.
Is there?
Yes, sir.
Is there a writing and has the structure evolved in that?
Yes, sir.
Their writing?
Yes, sir.
Their, their actuary is not computerized?
Yes, sir. No, it's not computerized, it's with the teacher.
They are sentence structuring the process?
Yes, sir. As needed. So just to what you talked on, it's not just a kid gets on a computer and go ahead and do this, do chapter one or do chapter, this is with the student, this is with the teacher, figuring out what that student needs. That's what we're going to be measuring. We're going to be measuring our effectiveness of tier two. So seventy-five percent of math and ELA students recommended for interventions, that's our tier two. Will improve their performance beyond two standard errors in baseline to the end of the year of math, ELA, and CDT. Our CDT's are our benchmark, what we're using. Beginning of the year, students take the overall comprehensive CDT, and throughout the year, we measure their progress from that first baseline. That's how we're going to be measuring if our interventions are effective. If they're not effective, we have to pause, make an adjustment, to get to that goal that we're setting. We're doing data meetings with teachers who are providing those interventions. So within our ATSI plan, after we provide the CDT, administrators are going to be working with those teachers, providing interventions, analyzing the data, looking focal points that those teachers need to focus on. And that's where it could be, but we need to work on our writing, we need to work on sentence structure, that's exactly. The CDT's will break it down by the standards so we can look specifically which standards are not getting addressed, which standards are students are not getting addressed. And we're going to have regular MTSS team meetings. The MTSS team is going to determine, look at the data, determine which students need tier one, tier two, tier three. We are working closely with Sapphire, our student information system, to develop an early warning system. An early warning system is determines which kids need help based off of attendance, academics, and discipline. Yes, we can walk the halls, we know our kids, we know all of our kids by name, we can walk off and say, yes, I think this person's struggling, but do we really know unless we really look at the data? Sapphire, we're, we're working on building a program, we're one of, one of five schools in all of Sapphire serves that is implementing this early warning system. We've worked with East Strausberg, it's very effective what they have there. It's identification process that finds that student that might be, those students that are in the middle. They don't cause trouble, they're not, they're not quite high academic, but they don't cause trouble, but they show up to school. Those are the kids that hopefully we can find, can address, and give them the supports they need to be more successful. So I covered a lot very quickly. If you look at your report, it's about a fifty-page report, I covered that in about five minutes long today. I think that's quite interesting. Going very quickly. Please open up the discussion, questions, concerns?
Positive behavior, does that also apply to staff? It should, I think it should.
We should be modeled, the staff should be modeling positive behaviors that we expect our students, and that should start from day one, when the students walk in the door, and it should continue the entire like the year.
Now, I did see the present plan, especially with all the one hundred percent, we've got.
Thank you.
We've all through on the, we've put our head.
Yes, sir. And even, and I know Dr. Neznik took a lot of thought about this, even if we don't necessarily have the designation, this is a practice that is healthy and we need to do.
I want to moderate mentoring. I know years ago, I met a student who graduated, and she still talks about she was a mentor, and I'm proud of her, and I think it's pulled her up even because she had really needed behavior-wise, academic, and she really liked that she could mentor, and that's great.
You say that, it just gave me chills. I'm so proud of our upperclassmen, our seniors that are moving on. They're so passionate about this mentor program that they've actually selected that's taking over for them. So those students can be mentors next year. Guys, we have some phenomenal kids.
Yeah, that's a good experience.
We have phenomenal kids. We need to make sure we're providing the best for them. And hopefully this plan is a step in the right direction. We've seen some of the data come back, some of it's effective, it's streamlined, continue to push forward. Thank you.
So this plan, what you have in this folder will sit on our district website for twenty-eight days. They will come back for approval of the board on June twenty-first. Next meeting, we will present our full comprehensive three-year plan that the state requires and that we write. You'll see a lot of the same similarities. Actually, Chris and I sat at a board table, they kind of tweaked, you know, it's been through different committees, and Chris and I first worked on the ATSI plan, it was on his computer, mine was on the comprehensive plan, and we meshed, and a lot of the areas that you're going to see are the ELA and the math. So where we saw, you know, red previously, and maybe the yellow now, where our goal is to see solid green into the blue, and dark blue is the best, and try to move those win tiles, you know, where they need to be. So a lot of our focus is going to be at the ELA, and Chris has done a great job working with our high school ELA teachers, English language arts teachers, on that literature keystone. So we know that that, you saw all yellow there, we know that that's been a weak area for us, but I have to say, I think we're pretty proud of where our teachers are headed, Mrs. Gasser and Mrs. Aldrich, in what they're doing. They've been working hard with the IU this year and Chris to, to make some improvements though.
So you mentioned things that have moved around, I assume for next year, and especially addressing English, can you address that, what would it mean, what teachers need to move around, adding teachers?
So, and Chris, do you want to talk a little bit about the work you've been doing with Mrs. Aldrich and Mrs. Gasser?
Yeah, so we, we partnered up with the IU, and we have worked with, what we wanted to say is because the I test, you go in, the I test says these teachers are working very hard, they are very passionate about what they're doing, they're clearly planning, they are assessing, but the data doesn't necessarily show that. So what's, what's off? Start from that foundation. Are we teaching to exactly what standards we should be covering for those students to be successful? That's what we thought. We break it down with Dr. Full and Stacy Duncan, we break it down with individual standards, and we say, this is the standard, this is the expectation of the standard, here are some things you can do within your classroom to be tested. And we've already seen early data with our CDT's, those students in those classes, thirty, thirty-five percent from the baseline data. So hopefully, that translates to those key stones. But those teachers, have they, they've been open to it? In fact, word of mouth, and this is kind of what I'm proud of, is they've seen the data, they've seen the change. Now, the remainder of our English department wants to take part in this. And even further, some of our other teachers in other subject areas, they want to get back to make sure that they can look at the data, see the adjustment, and see the improvement.
What grades are they? What grades do Mrs. Aldrich and Mrs. Gasser?
Nineteen and ten. Give us a question.
And they're, like, coming up from sixth grade to seventh, eighth grade, and some teachers are vertically aligned with that, that follow through in what they went up through, sixth grade?
And that's another, that's another component. So our junior high is now a block. So they're getting a lot of that English time, we want to make sure that that goes from there, smooth transition to ninth.
So the English teachers at seventh, eighth, third really like the block?
They do.
For that class?
They do. And, but, I know you, you made that adjustment to the block, there's still some tweaking. There always is, if you're not speaking, you're not adjusting, that you're not looking at the overall comprehensive picture. But there are some things, there are great positives, but we do need to make some adjustments to make sure that all of our kids are being effective on the block.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, we're going to move on to personnel. Nine point eight point one, I've moved, have accepted the following resignations, that's listed there. A favor, say aye.
Aye.
Give me a second. Give me a second. Chris, oh, that's it. All those in favor, please, just say aye. Close now, which carries? Nine point eight point two, I've moved, have approved the following child bearing, child bearing legal absence, that's listed there. Roll call.
Bats?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Lytle?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Nine point eight point three, I've moved, have approved the following employment. Kathy Reedy is a school nurse at the junior senior high school, salary seventy-eight, three forty-two, effective beginning of twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Amy Garber is Ag science teacher at the junior senior high school, salary fifty-two, five forty-three, effective beginning of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Would that be long-term self, or?
No, it would be a regular employment for now.
Okay. Evan Warmer has a part-time technology summer student working, an honor grade eleven fifty, effective six-six twenty-two. Megan Charles is an emotional support teacher at Penn Burnville Elementary School, salary fifty-nine, five-five fifty, beginning of twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Alex Akold is a fourth grade teacher at Penn Burnville Elementary School, salary fifty-two, five forty-three, effective beginning of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Amber Baker is a first grade teacher at Penn Burnville Elementary School, salary fifty-two, five forty-three, effective the beginning of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Ina Ceruley is a first grade teacher at Penn Burnville Elementary School, salary sixty-eight, nine ninety-three, effective the beginning of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And Caitlin Cupp has a fourth grade teacher at Penn Burnville Elementary School, salary fifty-five, seven sixty-three, effective the beginning of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. One second. Any comments? Roll call?
Bats?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Lytle?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Nine point eight point four, I've moved, have approved the recommendation to provide Amy Garber up to twenty days of per day leave beginning of July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. One second. Any comments?
And for, this is tied to the minister, the FA, and.
Yes, the SAE.
SAE programs. That would be permanent if she, we found a permanent position, permanent person for that position.
So she would be the permanent?
Oh, she is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right now, so she is emergency certified, she's going back to get her certification, it should be completed within the year, and then we can work it over to.
Okay.
The certifying. The only reason I'll note is, we usually do not include these on, you know, our days attached to our teachers. The only difference is because Amy's official employment would begin with the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, but she'll do a lot of the work during the summer for those programs, so we made a motion to allow those days to begin on the first of July.
Roll call?
Kaufman?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Lytle?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Nine point eight point five, I've moved, have approved the following deployments, status change. Aaron Schubertall from part-time to full-time data specialist, effective five eighteen, twenty twenty-two. Amy Miller from part-time admin assistant for athletics and cafeteria, full-time ten month administrative assistant for athletic and career services, effective twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And Jennifer Gardola is administrative assistant at the junior senior high school, so administrative assistant to the assistant to the superintendent, CFO at a rate of sixteen dollars, effective six-one, twenty twenty-two. One second. Roll call, any comments? Roll call?
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Lytle?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Nine point eight point six, I've moved, have approved the following volunteers, who have made their twenty-one, twenty-two school year, as listed. One second. Comments? Roll call.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Lytle?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Moving on, does anybody have any new or old business?
I personally like to thank Dr. Neznik and the board for allowing the Department of Ag to allow the administrative building to use for AI testing, AVN testing, drop off points for the community here. For anyone that knows anything about AVN, it's kind of hitting our area hard, we've got to run community numbers, and it was a great thing for them to have a very neutral site that is very local in the community to drop off their, their tests, their governing tests, to try and keep that at bay. Calendar events is listed there, a lot of exciting stuff coming up.
So how does that work in the farmer's brain with the blood samples?
So it's actually not a blood sample, it would be a swab of the beef area, the trank area.
Okay. Sorry. I'm just wondering why I check it out on my, my blood.
Yeah, no, they're doing, what I was told, they're doing a drive-through testing, because we are basically, this whole area is in what they're considering a hot zone right now, which is five kilometers from two sites in Marion Township, which encompasses parts of the district, basically. I'd be prejudiced where it was actually going to lose to that, which is coming in from the district. So any calendar events there, a lot of exciting stuff coming up here in May, stuff already happened, the prom was last week, so we saw a lot of pictures on social media, it was a really good time. Any citizens who wish to address the board, please rise and take your hand.
Hi, I'm Erica Hampton. I was just wondering if there was like a status update on your garden cutoff that I presented to you guys coming this year?
So the first reading of the policy will be presented at the June seventh meeting. So it will be on the agenda, and it will be officially ratified at the July twenty-first meeting.
Thursday, Tuesday.
Yeah, so it, you will make the cutoff point then. So the policy will state that it's at September first is the cutoff point.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I thought you had heard, heard it's on.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So we, we're going to move the policy up.
Okay, I just want to make sure because my daughter's supposed to graduate preschool and I'm like, am I going to graduate her or not? Okay, thank you so much.
So hands up.
Judith Goodt, is Mr. Johnson your athletic director?
He is.
Did my heart good to see him pleading to you for support. My daughter had a not, not an unusual, had an unusual talent for diving, and our high school didn't have a swimming pool. And it was like pulling teeth to get the athletic director to even just allow her to participate with the school. It cost their school nothing, I did everything. Of her four years, she placed in the top six in diving, and two years she was the state champion. I just wanted to say. I just wanted to say, you may be giving yourself unprecedented notoriety by allowing this. I, I think it's wonderful. I think it'll be a lot on the parents' part, but you really will be helping kids. I think when a student is committed to a sport, now there's always outliers, but when a student is committed to a sport, they are committed to their studies too. And when our daughter started diving, we told her, if your academics linger a little, you're out. She did nothing but become a great stellar student. So I, I just commend you and thank you for allowing this opportunity for those students because it is important. I really think a rounded student is everything. And secondly, thank you so much for the first thing that I've heard since I've been coming to board meetings about academic progress or tracking. So it impressed me. Thank you so much because I know it's a lot of work, but hopefully we'll be good benefits and the school will have a really good academic performance. So thank you.
Yeah, Anthony Rode. In the past, when we had looked at the ATS I data, when the community looked at that information, we had moved the block scheduling. We had gone from, we have a significant close of, I think, one hundred and twenty minutes of instruction or sixty minutes of instruction to one hundred and twenty minutes of instruction for seventh grade. That was seen as a big change that with the test force we had seen in the past, that was a necessary change and the other we moved in the right direction. But the ATS I data from math, is it going to be something similar or is there going to be kind of a phrase, is it some similar change or? Because we talked about some corrections and not the root cause. So that would seem as a big root cause, it was a big change or lack instruction or changes in instruction time. Did you find a similar root cause with one math on it?
We're going to analyze that kind of issue. We may as well, but it is possible that we look at some similar model, but we need to determine effectiveness of the ELA with the extra additional time.
Okay. Well, but did the ATS I test force for math, which is what Dr. Spoel waiting on, did that blend for the same kind of summation that the instruction time is not sufficient?
For math, we don't.
No.
Math. We, we are seeing that we can identify in some of those tiers of math. The extensions, the foundations of algebra, the tier math, those are some supports. But it is possible we need to look in another direction if these are not.
Thank you.
Jen Hasser. I just kind of had a question, comment, or maybe it's an inquiry. So just listening to your presentation and it's a lot of information about collecting data and doing a lot of the testing. When is the testing being done? I know I have a student in elementary and I feel like there's a lot of testing happening, like the teacher is sitting with the student one-on-one testing while the other kids are just sort of doing something on their iPad. So like, when are they getting some like good instructional like teaching moments? Like learning about things and not always being taught soon to know what they are.
So that's a great question. Unfortunately, you know, to gather some of this data, you know, there is instructional time that is sacrificed. That's something that we've looked at. Right around, I would say April timeframe, we pulled the principles together and kind of said, okay, let's, let's take a look, let's, as we're projecting out for next year, what things look like, let's kind of yank the brake a little bit, slow things down and look at how much data we are testing and how much instructional time's lost and what data we're collecting. And that's kind of where we are. You know, we've, we've done a lot of things with interventions on the math end, but it does take a lot of instructional time out of the, out of the day to be able to do some of that testing. So we've kind of, we've put that program, it's called Spring Math, on hold for right now. It's a solid intervention program, but we also need to take a look at what's the sacrifice, you know, that you mentioned. So we are, we're waiting for Mr. Port to come online as the assistant superintendent and Mr. Matlak, our director of teaching and learning, kind of bring their experiences together and then take a look at, right, what is the right balance? Because that data is, it is really helpful, but at the same point, I don't want teachers saying, okay. So, and I, and I had one teacher tell me, I pretty much in the month of January sacrificed math to get all this testing done. Well, I don't want that happening. I want to figure out how we can get short bursts of data that's going to impact what we're doing without sacrificing in the long run instructional. Does that make sense?
Because we know that there, you know, I know some of the information here, we've heard that it's not always true. But like there's the parent isn't the teacher, but like it's the teacher that actually has to sit through this test. It's not, I think nobody else is allowed to sit and help him do it. And I'm thinking, okay, well, those kids that are struggling, it's our parents. So we're testing them to find out where they're struggling is great because I do stat every day, my job as well. But like then, what are they doing with that data? Like, are we going to provide more instructional time?
Right. I, I think that's, with that spring math, I think that's one of the things Andy's talking about, we're going to try to find the balance of who should be doing the testing. From my perspective, the parents work really hard at testing. We went to teachers, they were testing and it took away instructional. It was a concern we've had since, what, January?
Yeah. And it's a double edged sword because what, what we've seen, especially at Bethel, and Mr. Gears has kind of talked a lot, you know, internally about this, but when the, when the teacher gathers the data and does a lot of the testing to get that data, they get to see firsthand where those deficiencies are. In the past, what we did is we had one of our reading specialists or math specialists say, here's your data, here's what you need to implement, here are your interventions. So that's where we're trying to find that balance. Like, you know, powers could, we'll look at that and see how much could a power support, how much can a teacher support? There are things like dibbling that are short bursts that, you know, they take, you know, less than five minutes to be able to get that data for that student. And is that something we can do? And is there something, a longer piece that we can have a paraprofessional help with or one of our, you know, instructional coaches or our reading specialists or how we can gather? We do have programs like iExcel that are out there. We have extra math. Those are discussions that are being had as to, we have these kids that are doing, you know, these games and it's generating data on the backend. What can we get from that? Are we using that data or are we just saying, you know, here, practice your math facts and, you know, we're just going to, we're going to use that as a practice? Well, that's valuable data that we might be missing out on. So a lot of those discussions have been happening over the last, it's in month to be able to see how, how can we fine tune our whole data collection piece? Even, you know, Mr. Hammerick had mentioned about the CDT, which is a classroom diagnostic test. It's, it's a phenomenal test, but the problem is it takes time. And if you pull the data that Mr. Gears, or excuse me, that Mr. Hammerick and Mr. Lynch presented, one of the things we can do is we can dive into that data and take a look at this classroom diagnostic test, how our kids perform there and how they performed on the keystones or the PSSAs. And it's a near, near, when you look at some of that. So that CDT is a good measure of how kids are going to, you know, perform on our, our state assessments. The problem is the CDT does take time. So that's, this past year, what we looked at is, you know, there's smaller chunks of time that can be utilized. And that's, those are all discussions we're having to try to, to maximize our data collection without disrupting the instruction. I completely hear you and, and I agree. And that's a lot of those conversations that we're trying to figure out. Erin Schibberall, I'm kind of identifying her. She's our, our data specialist. Erin does a lot of that data. She puts a lot of it in and we're, we're dumping it into the system. So we have a lot of that data. The piece now that we have to do is, what are we doing with that data? And that's something that Erin and I talk a lot about. And Erin will say, I'm doing all this, what are we doing with it? And that's, that's a key piece. You know, we've got a lot of data, what are we going to do with it? And not just keep collecting.
And also right now, aren't we still combating the pandemic and trying to get our footing? So I would imagine right now, it is more and more intense and maybe the tests are bigger. And I'm hoping that, you know, once we feel a better footing, we won't have to be doing the kinds of time.
And a lot of other principals will tell you, one of the benefits to having our teachers do that data is they have some very good discussions on that data. And so that's, that's, we just, like Mr. Palmer said, we just have to find that balance.
My name's Chris Kramer and I was just wondering how much consideration is put into some of those bigger tests like PSSAs and keystones? My daughter's a tenth grader and she scored basic on the algebra Keystone, but she is on honor. So how much do they take into consideration? There are just some kids, my daughter struggles with anxiety and those large tests freak her out and it's not the true reflective of her as a student. So how much is that weighed into it?
Well, and that's, and that's the balance. Like, you know, Mr. Hammerick said, we have great kids and they come through our doors every day and they're very successful. And I think we've seen a ton of our kids every month who are doing great things, have extremely high goals in what they're doing. And I bet you if you pull their test scores, they could be below basic or basic. So I will tell you personally, I think it's, it's one measure of what we're doing. I don't think it's the measure of who we are and what we do. The unfortunate thing is that's what gets public, that's when they start comparing people. You know, last, last meeting, we talked about news, U.S. News and World Report put out that tobacco was one hundred and ninety-one out of seven hundred and eleven high schools in that list. We were the seventh ranking, the seventh highest in the county for ranking. We go in each category about a quarter to a third. Now, you can look at it two ways. You can say, man, you're that low, you're a hundred and ninety-one, one hundred and ninety-first school in the county. But I think, I think when you look at what we're, what, what our kids are producing and what they're doing, we are on the upper end of where they are performing in the county. I'm not saying that we don't have a lot of room to grow and things we need to do. But I agree with you. I think there's a lot of measures that we need to look at. And I think one of those measures is looking at the kid. You know, where are they going? You know, if you look at, at one point, they used to look at how many kids went to college. And I think in our special ed plan, one of the areas we got dinged is a lot of our special ed students do not go on to college. Well, you know, if you look at our community, that may not be the necessity. Like, we've got a lot of our kids, we sent about a third of our high school onto BCTC. They come out with all the certifications they need to go right into their career field and they're very successful. So I think sometimes our, the standards of the state sets are not accurately aligned as to where the schools in the community are at the local level. So I know that's a really long response to your, to your question, but I do think it's a balance. Like I said, I don't, I think it's a measure. I don't think it's the measure. I think we should be looking at, like, if we're seeing all red and yellow data, that's a problem. But if we're seeing a healthy mixture of blues and greens, I think we're on the right track. And I don't know, you know, in an ideal world, I'd love to say we're solid blue. I don't know that's reality. I think if we see that our kids are growing and they're being successful, I think that's a measure that we look at that as successful.
That's a bigger problem than asking. I, I wish we didn't have to do any of it, but then do it the way that for the, the state to grade us or the district. But I hate testing. You look at how well a person is or how well they do overall. And you want to be successful in life, you'll need to be successful in academics and, you know, or in testing. I would think issue in testing. But I don't know the other way around.
Lisa, excuse me, Lisa Hassler. Since you're talking about data, I have a few questions in regards to that. What organizations have access to the students' test scores and personal identifiable, identifiable information?
As far as, what do you mean by that, what organizations?
Outside, like third parties. I know I had brought this up many years ago, never really got a straight answer. You were not the superintendent, so you're off the hook. But, you know, who has access to the information, all the data that's being collected where, other than you guys using it in order to help the students? Who else has access to that?
It would be the vendors that we.
And what do they do with that information?
That I don't know. I mean, I don't, you know, from my, I would have to look at each specific vendor as to what they do. I mean, it's not data that's sold.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. And another question is who will be held legally liable if there is a data breach or if the personal identifiable information is found outside of those vendors? That's a Brian question, I'm sure.
Yeah, it would just depend on where the data breach came from.
See, it comes from a board member.
I mean, we'd have to, I'd have to know the specifics of what, what we're talking about, but I mean, if, if there's a data breach on the vendor's side and they, they leak information, there'd be an issue there. If there's a data breach on our side, we'd have to look at how it was breached. Did somebody, you know, criminally access our computers?
Right.
To get information? So we'd have to look at the specifics.
Right. I understand that. Do you have any policies to prevent any third parties from accessing the PII?
I, I don't know that we have a specific policy, but, but, you know, FERBA would, would indicate that we don't share any educational records outside the school district, other than people that have the need to know the specific information. So we'd be governed by that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Seeing them done, we will have an executive session for personnel reasons. We'll move into adjournments. Salute.